All right, I would like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:02. It's hard to pull ourselves away from the gallery on an evening like this, so thank you very much. Everybody quieted down, so I knew it was the moment. So what I would like to do is do a roll call of those of us that are sitting at the table for anybody in the audience who may not be familiar with us, so that you are, as well as for the audience. So I will start with Board of Ed members. I myself am Deb Schu, I am the chair. We also have Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb, thank you.
Jeff Fleishman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Nicole Russo.
Present, thank you.
Suzanne Zakaris.
Present, thank you.
Chris Campbell.
Present, thank you.
Ramesh Kandipili.
Present, thank you.
And Sarah Heath is unable to join us this evening. Now, our administrators, Dr. Carnemola, our superintendent.
Here, thanks.
Mr. Janini, our assistant superintendent.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Meddick, assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, our business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Sardinskis, our executive assistant to the superintendent and board clerk.
Present.
Thank you. While I'm thinking of it, we had to move the public comments signup sheet to the other side of the room, so if you are interested, you can put your name on that list there. If you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay. "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." All right. Thank you. I always like to start our meetings by reading our mission statement, because it reminds us of the work that brings us to this table together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. And I can see all of our lovely Avon achievers sitting in the front with us. This is the perfect segue to recognize you guys, because that's what it's all about. We all are here so that we can celebrate you and give you opportunities. And obviously, having 48 internships represented out in the gallery space is showing that, too. So we're incredibly proud of all of you and the work that you did and the welcoming environment that you have created by doing the first day orientation for students. So what I would like to do is ask Mr. Tinker, if we want Mr. Tinker to come forward.
I'd like to thank the board for taking the time tonight to recognize the commitment that these students have put in over the past school year and the summer to make Falcon First a reality. The team designed Falcon First as an inclusive, school-wide, back-to-school celebration held on the first day of school with the goals of the entire Avon High School community connecting, building relationships, and kicking the school year off with a renewed sense of school spirit and excitement for the upcoming year. The team planned and implemented numerous fun and engaging events and activities all over the school campus throughout the first day's afternoon, including coordinating about 40 student volunteers to set up and run the events. Their work also involved fundraising, communicating and collaborating with the community, and partnering with PTO and district leadership to make this happen. They're grateful for your support and also wanted to give a special thanks to their administrative point person, Dr. DeVivo, who was helpful with many details along the way. It's been my privilege to have worked with this team over this past year, and I can't think of a group that better exemplifies the attributes we look for in graduates of Avon High. I hope they're proud of how they've left their mark. Please allow me to introduce the following founding members of the Falcon First leadership team. Sophia Agudelo. Sophia. Aki Babad. Lauren Edge. Neil Garag. Kate Loparko. Tanush Raju. Rehan Shamien. Manya Trevetti. Stephen Westrick. And our group leader and F1 chairman, Chinook Chimaday. This is our F1 leadership team.
Are we allowed to clap?
Thank you very much.
That is absolutely fantastic. We have certificates for you. We would like to recognize you officially. So if you don't mind, you can come up one at a time. We'll shake your hand, we'll give your certificate, and then we'd like to take a group picture. So what we'll do is we'll have you come forward and then just align up behind the board members over here, and then we'll take a group shot. And parents are welcome to take pictures as well, so.
I just want to pause for a moment and thank you again, Mr. Tinker, and everyone at Avon High School, and certainly mostly all of you. As you know, I spoke to some of you in the planning processes, saw you working on planning some of the time, and then finally was able to come and see you at work on the day you launched, and it was fabulous. There were a lot of smiles. It was very well organized. You guys did, I emailed you this to say sorry, but I wanted to say it publicly, you did a fantastic job, and that's why I had asked if we could bring you here to recognize you tonight. And also you, Mr. Tinker, for leading this group of young people to be able to do this and start a new tradition. So we're very grateful for you. Thank you.
Yes, the eighth graders are so nervous, and having fellow students greeting them makes a huge difference in that transition. So thank you for being ambassadors of kindness. I think that's fantastic, and it's a great tradition to have, and thank you for stepping up to do it. We're incredibly proud of you. So another round of applause.
Mr. Tinker, you want to, well, simplify, because...
You can stand here, then we can shake their hand.
That way.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Rehan?
Sorry.
Congratulations. Tanush? Manya? Sophia? Lauren? Stephen? Kate? Neil?
Thank you.
Chinook? Thank you. Manya? Sophia? Lauren? Stephen? Okay. Steve? Kate? Neil?
Thank you.
Chinook?
Please join us, of course. If there are parents, certainly help yourself to coming in front and taking a picture as well as moving.
There's a method to this madness.
Yes.
Right in the middle.
A little closer. On his way, step forward.
Go ahead. Step forward, yes, step forward. Come behind me. Yeah, come closer. That way we get everybody here. We're right in the distance of itself, all right. So here's what we'll do, we'll make it easy on you. Everybody look to the left first, okay? To the middle and the right. To the left. To the left. She's done this before. All right? And we need one official, hold on. Stay in the official.
We do not find a fence, so please.
Lots of homework.
Yes, lots of school night stuff to do, so thank you for joining us tonight. That was fun.
Thank you.
All right, so now on to the business. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes of August 20, 2024?
So moved, Deb.
Thank you, Thage. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? Aye, passes with eight. You got it. All right, next, do I have a motion to approve Board of Education's special meeting minutes of September 10, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Suzanne. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Deb.
All right, Thage, all in favor? Aye, passes with eight again. All right, do we have any communication from the public? All right, so we are still anxiously awaiting to find out who our student representatives will be. Hopefully, next month we'll have them with us. So we'll move on to the financial report with Ms. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're going over the end-of-year June 2024 for the closing of fiscal year 2324, as well as August 2024 financials for this new fiscal year. We ended the year of the fiscal year 2324 with a little over $6,600 remaining, which was a spectacular use of our funds. We were able to spend down our money as budgeted, and I thank the board for their approval of those end-of-year purchases in May and June. Our facility use fund, unaudited, final balance was $152,302. There were approved projects the board gave us a green light on, but until the budget was approved mid-July, we did not commit to any of those expenditures. We are finishing up those projects as we speak. Some of them, I'm not going to read all of them, but they do include the parking lot repairs at Thompson Brook, those playground barriers at Roaring Brook, and we did some other work at Thompson Brook with the stairways and playground repairs throughout all three elementary schools. The technology protection plan ended the year with $17,657. Again, we held off committing these funds until the budget was passed, so we'll be working with the technology team to get those funds expended for replacement Chromebooks and/or parts as dictated by the plan. In special education, we had five settlements that we committed funds to at the end of the year totaling $764,589 to fund those tuitions for this school year. In August 2024, you'll see variances in all of our salary lines. This is a normal routine thing we do at this time of year. As we hired folks, come on at different steps than we actually planned, some of our staff members voluntarily move to different schools or different departments. So you'll see a budget transfer 2025007 in your consent agenda, which moves all those salaries and aligns them to what the budget was. We were within our budgeted funds, and you'll see we still have a positive variance in salaries. Other expenses, one item we're seeing a little bit of a rise in is utilities, particularly electricity. As we discussed in finance committee, we're seeing some savings in our water and gas, but electricity, we're finally seeing that rise in prices that Eversource had told us about almost a year ago. We adjusted for it, didn't see it last year, and now we're seeing it this year. So you'll see a budget transfer 2025008 on your consent agenda, which is moving some utility funds around to cover that deficit in electricity. In special education, we had not committed all of our funds yet in August, so you'll see where we land at the end of September when we review those financials. So at the end of August, we had just over $8.2 million remaining compared to the year prior of $16 million, and that variance, although significantly high, is due to the timing of transferring the funds for our medical pension and OPEB expenses to the town.
Thank you, Susan. Does anyone have any questions? All right, always, really well done. Thank you. Okay, next, our committee reports. Curriculum and professional practices, Lynn.
Yes, our first meeting is not until October 29.
Excellent, thank you. Finance, we just got our update, but our next meeting will be on October 8. It's always the Tuesday prior to our monthly meeting. Next, negotiations, Suzanne.
Yeah, we're close to a settlement with the teachers at this point. Close.
Excellent, thank you. Policy, Thage.
Deb, our first meeting will be 9/24/24, which is next week.
Excellent. Our liaison report for the Capital Region Education Council, Chris Campbell.
Yeah, we have our first meeting tomorrow. It'll be in Hartford.
Excellent, thank you. All right, on to the chair report. I just want to say how excited I am that we are actually in the thick of school already, like we are back. There's no doubt there, and I love reading all of the newsletters from the different buildings. I'm dying to find out what reverse charades is. I don't know that I understand that, so maybe someone can explain it to me, Ms. Wallace, if you don't mind. But thank you for sending those updates to families, because that just really rounds out the experience and creates that environment that we all want our families and students to have. So good job to everybody for hanging in there. We're getting going, but you're doing a great job, and it sounds like we have great experiences for everyone tonight. It's so hard to pull ourselves away from with those presentations, and the variety of interests that the students have is always amazing. We have different things. Oncology is usually pretty popular, which I'm really quite impressed that the students can handle that from an emotional standpoint as well, but they get good support. Lots of engineering. There was a lot of law opportunities. There was a lot of UConn in stores, so they had to drive themselves there. So that's dedication as well, and even some remote opportunities that seem to be very enriching. So I'm just really proud of the fact that we offer these opportunities to our students, and they seem to all get a lot out of it. So I will stop there and throw it to Dr. Carnemola.
Thank you. And Mr. Meddick with the hiring report.
Good evening, everyone. Our September hiring report highlights the continued work of our school teams and district teams to bring on high-quality educators across the district. Many of these individuals were hired towards the end of August after our last board meeting and began with us at the start of the school year or for various professional development days at the start of the year. We do have several para-educator openings still that we're working to fill, and our buildings are currently working to fill some upcoming medical leaves that we have for certified staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And our enrollment report. See, we are down about seven from students overall in the district from last month. As I mentioned previously, I think in the August meeting, we are still, we have lower choice numbers than we have seen in some other years at this time. We are fully filled in pre-K. We are not in kindergarten. We've been talking about some of the reasons why that might be, and we do still have seats open in the lottery. Tassan and I have been meeting with folks from Cruck and having those kinds of conversations. I think we're seeing more of this, I think, as I said last time we met, across the state at this point, but we are still working on that, and I'll let you know where we land. We try to make sure that whoever we have enrolled, we've done so by October 1st. So we're still revisiting those numbers. And class sizes overall, as a matter of fact, until October 1st. You can see our kindergarten classes remain a little bit smaller this year than they have in previous years overall. Part of that is due to the legislation. Again, I still think we're seeing families moving in and moving out as houses continue to sell in town, and keep an eye on that every month.
Just answer your question, sorry.
Yep, I was gonna say, are there any questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. Just quickly looking at this, Pine Grove is down 50 students from last year. That seems to make up the bulk of the difference from the year before. Is there anything in particular with that that is causing that? It's just where people are living in town?
I think one of the other things that is an issue that is impacting enrollment continues to be the falling out from the fire at Avon Wood, because we are missing students that, some that would have been here as a result of that. Some are still here because they're displaced, but others have moved and found permanent housing elsewhere while that was transpiring. So I think that's a piece of what we're seeing, Jeff.
Thank you for reminding me about that. I had forgotten about that and how that could impact our enrollment.
Yeah, Thompson Brook is also up. There's a bubble of classes that, you know, as always, that we're watching go through. The enrollment at Thompson Brook is higher than we've seen it, and so is the class, so are the class sizes.
I have a quick question. I don't know, I should have been aware of this already, but I noticed you have one co-teaching class. Is that typical to just have one, or is this something we're trying, something new?
This is the, because of the space needs that presented themselves at Pine Grove, we combined two classes into one. We have two teachers. We did that last year. We carried that forward this year with the same two individuals, and that was as a result of, we still are, even though you see these numbers are down, the space issue is still what it is at Pine Grove as a result of the programmatic needs there, so.
I thought it was special education co-teaching. No.
No, that is two teachers teaching a larger class than most teachers teach together that we did last year and carry forward this year. Third grade, right? Second, sorry. I'm not, I'm looking at you, you're nodding, yes, second grade, sorry. Is it? Okay. So staying with me by way of some updates related to the strategic plan, feel out of order because it's like more general, like I'm actually gonna do it a little bit out of order, because one of the things I think I realized as I was getting ready for tonight was we actually haven't seen each other and had a full board meeting since before the school year started. It doesn't feel that way for the rest of us, but in reality, the last time we sat at this table, we were just on the eve of school beginning. So I just want to pause for a moment and thank all the faculty, staff, and the administrators in the districts for everything that you did to make it a successful first week of school, of course, the board for your support, the Avon Police Department, who provided a ton of support at the beginning of this year because of the traffic, in large part as we expected. The Avon Old Farms road closure has impacted us, it has continued to impact us. I think we're getting ourselves to the point with busing and parent pickups, drop-offs to the best place that we're going to be. We're just about there, but it has taken this long to make some of the changes, particularly at Thompson Brook School, where it was a more difficult start to the year trying to make up for having to make complete changes in drop-off and pickup at Thompson Brook, which was a result of the need not to have cars all the way down Thompson Road, which really was always an issue with traffic and was pretty dangerous. Now, we could not do it because of, they could not spill out, and we had to come up with a new plan, as you know. So that, I'd like to thank everyone, and particularly Ms. Morgan Hostetler and Ms. Barnett, who had to manage it in their first, you know, week on the job alongside of the rest of us trying to make that work, and I think they've done a great job, and we've been able to move forward. But it really has impacted all of the schools, because when the buses slow down, it has a trickle-down effect all the way down to the elementary level. So we're still dealing with that, but it looks a lot better than it did. I just wanted to thank everyone for both your work on that and just in getting the school year up and running. We're behind in some of the projects, as we expected to be, and last year, that was because of the weather, that we were behind in a couple of projects. This year, we're more behind in some of the projects, because as you know, for some of the larger items that had to be done that required contracts to be signed, we were legally unable to move those projects forward until the budget was settled. So some of those were put off well into August, and we are still now waiting on contractors to come in some areas, but I think we're moving forward nicely, and we're hoping, fingers crossed, that we're still able to get everything done before the weather turns on us. Also, thank you to everyone. We did that crazy idea that we had for convocation, which again feels like months and months ago to all of us that have been here since, but we, until we had to evacuate the high school for a water issue that morning, which we had to demonstrate all of the facets of the Portrait of the Graduate ourselves, as the educator, you know, the 500 of us that were in this building, working through these workshops related to Portrait of the Graduate. I was in the gymnasium doing, having just done it myself with one of the teachers, being blindfolded and walking through cones, listening only to verbal directions in a room full of people. Pulled the blind off, pulled off, and a couple of folks were standing there waiting for me to call me outside and say, "We're gonna have to shut this down. We're gonna have to shut this down. We don't have any water here." So that was a huge pivot. Everyone did it. I really, pretty much, as seamless as possible. I think the worst part of that day was actually, again, the traffic trying to get 500 people out of this building and rearrange somewhere else, but up until then, and again later after that, we really had a fantastic day. Some of you were with us for convocation. We recognized a lot of our faculty and staff members for the years of service this year. Remind me how many, I think it was like 61? 63. 63 people who had met milestones in years of service, five years and above, some 40. You know, we're, it's been a pretty exciting year. Yes, he doesn't want that mentioned, so I'll just keep moving that forward. Yeah, we had a lot of big birthdays for folks on the team this year, too. I won't mention any of you either, but no, none of us want to mark our time by birthdays or years of seniority at this point. Back to strategic plan, all of that, of course, is related, but more specifically, our first full PD session is September 25. The planning for that is well underway. A large part of that will be devoted to our mathematics program, and also we're moving forward our walkthroughs, or I mean, excuse me, our instructional rounds training that we've been doing with our faculty and administration, so we're excited about that. There are, again, a number of policies I think that will have to be updated as a result of changes in both state statute and/or regulations that have to be followed by school districts. Some of those, it seems, were made later in the session, and in legislative session, number one, and/or two, have not been followed up yet with the requirements from the State Department of Ed. So I feel there, we're a little bit behind in getting some of the model policy updates from Shipman that we normally would have at this time of year, but they are still working themselves on some of what that looks like. So I've been working with Christine and with board council to try to draft a policy agenda for this coming week for Thage, the policy committee chair to look over even, and I'm not quite there yet because I'm still waiting for some of the models to come to us. So I'm not, I'm not sure where we're going to land on Tuesday night yet with policies to be updated that are in compliance, but one that I know we don't have to update, but will put on the agenda to speak about, is use of personal electronic devices by students, because we do have that policy. As you know, state law now requires all boards of education to have a, quote, "cellphone policy," but our cellphone language is within that policy. So that we can put on the agenda at least to have a conversation about and to decide what we want to do in the future, have some conversation around it. As you know, the high school sent out the survey, so we have those results. I think we can discuss some of that at the policy committee meeting also. Stephanie and I have been sorting through those results, and I guess what I would say to you is, we're not, it's not that surprising. The results are split, is exactly the way we would expect to see it. There's not, there's not a clear-cut response in, of course, well, there are some clear-cut responses. As you might imagine, our students answered mostly, mostly the way that we might expect them to, which is, please don't ban our cellphones from school, and our teachers answered mostly the way you might expect them to answer, which was, please, let's talk about banning them even further than they are already. Our parents, split down the middle. And now, I'd say we had a larger response than you might often have to surveys. Still not the majority of people, but at least a better number sample than you might normally see. So I think we'll look at that and have some discussion around that and whichever other policies Shipman may have ready for us by then. And I think I'll, first of all, say, we tried to keep this agenda light, because as you know, we do need to meet in executive session to be able to go through the safety and security all hazards plan. That is a confidential plan between, that only certain individuals in the district can see the entirety of, the Police Department and the State Department of Emergency Management Services. So that is the reason we do that in executive session. If you've never been with us before, so that you know that's the purpose behind it, and I wanted to make sure that we had enough time to discuss that, especially in light of what we have yet again unfortunately been seeing happen in the country and having dealt with a threat ourselves here in the school district that really wasn't about our school district or one of our schools, but within, as you know, within the first, you know, week or so of school, we've had to respond and go into our procedures as well. So I think it's timely for two reasons. One, because it's always timely to talk about safety and security. Two, because we submit the plans at this time of year, and I'd like the board to see them before they're turned in. And three, I think we have to make sure that everyone is on the same page, understands the direction we go in when certain incidences happen, and these plans encompass everything from, there could be a tsunami to, you know, an evacuation related to a gas leak. It's why it's called an all-hazards plan. So we work hard to prepare for all of those potential issues, and the board needs to know what that looks like. So I think we'll spend the majority of time tonight doing that and keep this agenda light again for that reason. So I'll end with just saying I'd like to publicly thank very quickly...
Communication from Avon Board of Education members, anyone? No? Okay, so I just want to make sure before moving into executive session that I invite the right people. We've got the chief, is there another police officer?
So the chief of police is coming in. Is Detective Reed coming with you? Chief? No, just the chief.
Got Mr. Conley.
Mr. Conley, Director of Security.
Roberto and Jeff?
And Susan, because some of the time we have to talk about some of the finances related to these plans.
And both Roberto and Jeff, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to move ourselves, we'll make a motion to move ourselves into executive session for the purpose of an update on safety and security all hazards plan submission, but prior to doing that, I want to just, on the record, note who's joining the board in that. We're gonna go into the community room, so you'll be able to break down and everything out this way. So we have Dr. Carnamola, Chief Malanson, our Director of Security, Mr. Conley. We have Ms. Russo, Mr. Medic, and Mr. Janini. At this time, I will make the motion at 7:34 to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. All in favor? Alright, so at this time...
I'm sorry. I, I should have asked. Are you able to come in with us? If, it, it, we can allow, I have an intern, as you know, and she is here tonight, and this is, we are able to allow her to come in if the board agrees to it, because you don't get a chance to see these kinds of things as a, as an intern unless it happens to come up. So if you can invite her in, she's there to.
Yes.
Me and our...
So if the board is agreeable, we will invite Dr. Carnamola. Melissa Work, her intern, to join us and witness the work. Alright, thank you.
Do we have to, do we actually vote on that? We're second.
And then did we all vote? And we all agreed, right?
Okay.
Seven thirty-four.
Yep.
Okay.